Order at six oh one fifty nine. Um, sit down, we're not giving. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner is not on yet. Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong. Councilmember Gurnell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Mm hmm.
And we have John Austin with Gus Law. Present remotely.
Hi, John.
Happy to be here.
Okay. Item number two, page three, discussion. Discussion regarding the proposal minutes to title five, Public Works, chapters fifty and fifty one. Chino Valley Town Code. You're not Terry.
No, sir.
It says right there, Terry.
But she she did all the hard work on this. So without this, this wouldn't, without her, it wouldn't be possible.
Gotcha.
All right, you ready?
Ready.
All right. Well, this is bringing to bear the the changes in the utility code. That's chapters fifty and fifty one of the town code. Some of these changes date back to before I was here, so I think even twenty fifteen or so is when staff or the legal team started working on this. So we finally got it ready for for counsel to look at. We ran it through the utility committee, so they've seen this, given their input. And we're ready for for counsel to give your input. So with that, I'll start in on the slides. This was born out of feedback and direction, like I said, from the Water and Utility Committee. The first draft of the proposed changes were discussed with that body and revised before bringing it to this full council. Now, the proposed changes were developed in collaboration effort among the town manager's office, finance, public works, engineering, development services, and the town attorneys. It touched almost all the bases of the town. Now, the goal is of these amendments is to align the town codes with council philosophy in order to manage and development activities until the new general plan and utility master plans are in place. So like I said, these are chapters fifty and fifty one of the town code. That's the utility provisions. We're dividing this into basically what amounts to just administrative updates that are just cleaning up language, aligning duties between town staff and that sort of thing. And then there's other policy and development issues that are more impactful that we'll go over that maybe have some council input on. So with that, I think in your packet, there's a table of all the changes. I'm not sure what page it is because I don't have the packet in front of me.
It's on page four.
On page four. And so we'll just basically start going through these, the summary of changes. The summary was developed between staff and legal. And we think it's a good representation to summarize the code. So the first big change is the authority of the director. In the in the current code, everything's under Director of Public Works authority. So staff felt that the power should be reflected, changed because of anything to do with billing or connection fees or anything like that is moved under Finance Director. And anything operational is still under the Public Works Director. So we just think it's a little more appropriate for how the town functions. And that's the the billing practices as well. Instead of it's set by the Public Works Director, which I don't think you want me setting your finances. Set by the Finance Director and approved by the town manager. Now, the applications for service was removed with the specific applications and left a policy direction of the finance manager as approved by the town manager. So and then some other cleanup language. And the next several items refer to this. So we'll use the water quality standards as an example, instead of listing out the exact parts per million of arsenic or other metals. It just references whatever standards are required in our permits and other rules and regulations we follow. Same with the technical standards, instead of saying some of the old outdated mag standards, it's just current standards. Pretreatment, same thing, instead of listing the limits, just that we don't exceed all local limits. The appeals process, instead of stating the official restating the appeals process, it just refers it to the general code and IPC is International Plumbing Code Process. So the buy-in fees and the water rates. Those are set by council resolution. So rather than restating them in the code every time the resolution changes, we just refer to the current resolution that council sets with the rate studies. Now, the sewer disconnection was clarified a little to give the town the option to plug inactive services. Now, this is needed because Chino Valley is a little bit unique that we have more sewer customers than than town water customers. So when it's operate, when their water is operated by a different company, we need to be able to plug the sewers. When someone moves away, for example. And what this does is just clarifies that authority to plug those services so that it's when the new customer comes in, they have to apply for new service and can't get free service. Some definitions were added to clean things up, such as line charge or payable cost repayment agreement and repayment amount. We'll be going over some of those policies later, but we just felt it was good to to clean up some of those definitions and clarify things a little. Same with the sanitary sewer system. It was called four different things throughout the the code, CTR, collection treatment recharge, sewage work. So we just said sanitary sewer system and changed all the wording to match. And then for connection and tap installation process. This was clarified that the town connects the taps and we limited it to taps, water taps, two inches or less and sewer taps, six inches or less, because town doesn't have the equipment to make the larger taps. And to be honest, I think we have maybe one meter in town that's larger than two inches, so it rarely happens anyway. So then we get on to the more impactful changes that are policy related. And the guiding concepts here promotes managed thoughtful growth. And it will discourage some of the small lot subdivisions that may be coming up with zoning changes. Discourages them from being in remote places or in places in town where there aren't utilities. It tries to encourage that higher density growth where the town has the utilities and facilities to support it. And it's just kind of a bridge to get us through until the general plan can really define where those areas of growth need to be. It also preserves the town's right to upsize utility lines. If a developer comes in, the town needs the right to upsize those lines to fit its master plans. And it removes a potential subsidy for a large development. We'll go over that in a little bit. And limits the town contribution to cost of materials for those upsizing and just clarifies that. Did I skip a slide? Okay. Anyway, these are examples of what we're talking about for the upsizing. The current code says that the town can would need to pay for any size water line over twelve inches or any sewer line over eighteen inches that's upsized. So example one, developer needs to install an eight inch water line, but the town needs a twelve inch water line. That means the town can ask the developer to install the line up to twelve inches at no cost to the town. And that's same as current code. Example two is developer needs a, say, a ten inch water line, but the town needs a twenty four inch water line. Then the town should be paying for the difference between a twelve and twenty four inch pipe. So not the installation or the excavation, just the cost of the materials. And example three is is kind of the clarification, because both of those first two examples are the same as current code, but the example three wasn't really addressed in the code. Say the developer needs an eighteen inch pipe for their development. And that's the same size the town needs. It's bigger than twelve inches, but since they already need an eighteen inch, it should be at the developer's cost, not the town's. And that's what the current, the new changes clarify that, where if the developer needs to upsize bigger than the twelve or eighteen inch, then the developer should pay for that if it's not needed by the town. Okay, so we move on to repayment agreements. And these are, these are coming up in some of the developments. Repayment agreement is where when a developer has to extend utilities across other people's property to get to theirs. They they should be able to put a repayment agreement that when those other properties connect, they pay their portion of that extension. And this would clarify the procedures and eligibility. One big thing is it's limited to ten years, and a lot of developers have given feedback that they feel that's too short. Especially with the previous recession we had, property can easily sit for ten years. And they would, then their payback would expire. And they wouldn't see any money. And the utility committee, it was discussed even go in thirty years, and they felt that was too long because businesses go under, people pass away, it'd be hard to keep track of the billing. And several other cities and towns around Arizona use the twenty years. So it's a recommendation from staff in the utility committee that that twenty years is a good number to go to, pretty, pretty standard. And in addition, the town would add a notice of those payback amounts associated with the properties. And that would be recorded at the county, so it would come up on a title search if someone's looking at the property, so they wouldn't be blindsided when they come in for a building permit that, hey, I owe X amount for the for the payback on that. It would come up in their title search.
Frank, I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just a second? Councilmember Turner would like for us to conference call him in. He's having issues logging on the Zoom. So can you give me one second?
Please, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm still doing on it, I guess. I thought she's gonna get it from me. Like, no.
We have you on the conference call in the chambers.
Lonnie, you missed out, pizza man.
What's that?
You're missing out on pizza.
Oh, man.
And Valentine's Day.
Tonight's probably a good night to to miss out on pizza.
Lonnie, we're currently in, in, do you have your packet with you? We're on, we're on page thirty one of eighty four. And we're talking about subsection five one zero five nine right now. Did you hear all that, Lonnie? Did you hang up? Hello. Technology is wonderful.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Hey, can you hear us now?
I can hear you.
Okay, Lonnie, I was telling you, he's on page thirty one of eighty four in the packet. We're at subsection five one point zero five nine.
Okay.
All right. He's gonna continue on.
Thank you. Yeah, for a brief summary, we went over all the administrative changes. Now we're moving into the the upsizing and got through that, and we're in the payback agreements. So just to recap, the big thing is it goes from ten to twenty years on the repayment agreements and adds the notice of recording. Counsel will still see each and every agreement as the current code calls out for. And we also with feedback from developers, looked at trying to ease some of the procurement requirements. The current code says that if a developer wants to use a repayment agreement, they need to follow the town's procurement code, which can be quite cumbersome sometimes. So we remove the procurement code requirements if they're using completely private monies. And they just need to submit a a cost estimate to be reviewed by the town engineer, and that's what the basis of the agreement is. But their procurement rules aren't the same public bidding ones that we follow. And if they, if the town participates in the development agreement for the extensions, then that'll apply the state statutes, Title thirty four, which is the state's requirements for construction activities and the bidding requirements per state. Not necessarily the town, which the town's tighter than the state. So we're trying to make life a little easier on on the developers to to get the utility extensions. So it's a win-win for everybody. All right. So the next item is a connection requirements for water. We'll look at water first, and that's in section fifty one oh seven five. Just briefly, in the UDO changes that were made not long ago, it basically set everything to, if it was within three hundred feet of the parent parcel or the subdivision, it would need to connect. So little bit of tweaking here. So we looked at it, and our recommendation is for single lot residential, an existing lot that's not in a subdivision, that's just out in the country for, say, if it's at the property line, they need to connect. So there might be a small extension across the front edge of their property, but they would need to connect for new construction on that.
New construction, got it.
New construction. If it's a subdivision where the lots are one acre or larger, so a big lot subdivision, it's the same rule that was in the UDO changes, that if it's within three hundred feet of the subdivision, they need to extend and connect and put the utilities in the subdivision. And the the wrinkle that's coming up with some of the zoning changes is if it's a new subdivision with lots less than one acre, basically, they must connect. So that it's a little bit different from the current code. Years ago, it was the the one acre level that any lot less than an acre needed to be on sewer. It was changed to half acre a few years ago, and that's where it's at now, but this would would bring it back to less than an acre. But if the zoning changes come through for quarter and half acre zoning, it in essence is half acre anyway. But that's what we were, the recommendations are. And some of the current utility code was still at the four hundred foot level, and this was changed to three hundred to match the the current UDO. So that's water. So sewer is a is fairly similar to water in fifty one one five five. We do have a something in here that I don't know if the council wants to discuss, but for non-residential or multifamily, that's commercial, industrial, multifamily developments. When the sewer is within three hundred feet, it's a mandatory connection. So that's a, that's a little bit different.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please? I was reading.
For commercial and multifamily and industrial.
Okay.
Mandatory connections, if it's within three hundred feet.
Okay.
For existing.
For existing. Not, not just new existing. So for single lot, it's still optional for existing construction.
Okay.
For single lot residential, one acre or larger, it's the same if it just, just at the property line, not three hundred feet, just at the property line. And then the new subdivisions, one acre or larger, is the same as the water. If it's within three hundred feet of the subdivision boundary, they need to extend and and put sewer in the subdivision. Okay, and for sewer and subdivisions less than one acre, they need to connect to sewer. Or if there's no sewer available, they have the option of designing what I call a package plant neighborhood treatment facility until such time as sewer goes by. And the details of that would be in the development agreement for the subdivision. Then here's another slight wrinkle that if the lot, if there's a lot split, that's allowed to create lots less than one acre, they still need to connect with sewer.
Is this, if they're within three hundred feet or if it's at the property?
Period.
Period.
So if they're.
Creating a lot less than, less than one acre than they're hooking up.
Right. No matter the distance.
And that's sewer and water both, correct? Would be if they were at their property or within the neighborhood.
I think it's just sewer. John Austin and Terry, if y'all could. The previous. Same as a subdivision.
Okay, but that says subdivision, so if you're, that includes a lot split.
So basically, if you're, if you have a lot split less than one acre, you're treating it the same as a subdivision.
Okay.
And the result of that would be you would be basically limiting the smaller lot divisions, be it subdivision or lot splits, to places where there's water and sewer until the new general plan comes out.
Okay.
And we discussed this in the utility committee, too, and the the failed septic systems, what do you do if the system fails? Do you make them connect if there's sewer out there, or can they fix their septic system? And we recommend just leaving it as purely optional, just like the single family residential for existing construction. So basically, if unless the health department or the town engineer deems it a menace to public health, they can use their expansion area or those types of things to repair their septic system if they choose. So it's a homeowner's option. And to be honest, I think it's going to be a rare, very rare case where you have a failing septic system when sewer goes by that I haven't seen it since I've been here. So generally, if you have that, you're going to have a neighborhood project like they did in the past to create the sewer system, and you'll have something like that going in.
Anything on that? Lonnie, you got anything on that?
No, I think I'm catching most of it.
Okay, bud.
Okay, and this is that statement about the public health. So it gives the town, keeps the authority with the town or or the county, because the county is delegated by ADQ to regulate septic tanks, and you have a Pike County. Gives us both the power to deny a septic system when it can be deemed a menace to public health, so.
Okay.
If there's some sort of pollution condition or something. Okay, and then lastly, there will be a few changes needed with the UDO because of dealing with the small lot subdivision and lot splits, trying to unify the current UDO with that until we get the general plan updated. So if this goes through with council, then Lori will take it up and make a few text amendments to get the UDO to match with those smaller lots. And, yep, and this is just an update on the general plan. They're in the process of putting packages together to acquire consultants. And it's going to be a comprehensive approach to future growth and development. And like I said, it will better handle the small lots and where they're placed throughout the town. And that's the end of the presentation.
Really?
That's it. So.
No slides?
What was that, Lon? He already had a hundred of them, so.
So but in a nutshell, it basically splits up finance and puts all the money stuff under Finance Director and clarifies some of the rules for connecting to sewer and water. And has the dividing point at one acre lots and under one acre lots.
Understand.
And clears up the repayment agreement stuff, so it's a little easier to to work those out with developers.
One, one quick question, if somebody was to divide a five acre lot into, say, two, five and a half, is that going to be mandatory hookup then? Or is it because it's over, over an acre? It's okay. Right?
If they're.
It's just when you go under acre with a division.
If they're over an acre, if it's at the property line when they build, that's when they need to connect.
Over an acre?
For, if it's a split, yeah. If it's a subdivision, they would put it in with the plat.
Nothing. Nope. Any?
I'm marinating.
Okay. Lon, you got anything for him?
I don't think so.
He's thinking, too. We got two thinkers working.
That's fine.
Can you clarify for me? New single lot residential on one acre or larger? That's water and sewer?
It's larger than.
That was sewer.
That's what it says.
And single lot residential is at the property line for water. So water and sewer. The the difference is water, it doesn't matter the size lot. If it's not at the property line, they don't need to connect. But with sewer, if it's smaller than an acre, they've got to connect, even if it's not at the property line. If that makes sense.
Does that include what we used to refer to as flag lots?
I'm sorry.
Does that include what we used to refer to as flag lots?
Right. They would just use their property line of the flag as the, as the measurement. The the corner where the flag touches the right away.
Okay.
But there are, I will tell you, depending on how long the flag is, sometimes you get.
That's what I was thinking.
Lots that don't work, because if they're downhill, you'll come out of the ground, so they would have to go on septic anyway.
Now, I was thinking for water. Okay.
Lonnie, did you come up with anything yet, buddy?
No, I, you know, I'm catching most of it. I think I got the septic. Can, can you, because I can hear you really good. Tell me what the failed septic system, we came up with that, on how that's treated. Tell me what the failed septic system, we came up with it with that on how that's treated.
He said that it's up to the owner's discretion. That they can either repair their septic or hook up to sewer. And he said that most times if your septic fails, you're not going to get a new septic in it, basically, right? Because your property is already saturated. Is that what you're saying?
It depends on how it fails, if it's a broken tank, you can just replace the tank.
Okay, he said if it's a broken tank, you can just replace the tank, I'm repeating so he can hear you.
Right, yeah, the Utility Committee had discussed some other options of. If it costs. Two or three times more than the repair. To connect, then let them repair it and that sort of thing.
Okay, said if the repair, if it costs two to three times more than the. To repair the system, no, to hook up the sewer than to repair the system, that they would let them repair the system.
Well, that, that's an option.
As an option.
Yeah, because I know we had talked about some percentages and said, okay, if somebody's septic system fails. And it's going to cost. You know, X amount, like if it's going to cost. Two thirds of the amount. To hook up to sewer, then they would go ahead and hook up the sewer, that's just a example, but we had talked about some percentages that way. But at this point, it's totally up to the landowner and they can. They can basically do whichever way they want to go.
Right, and the reasoning behind that is that it happens very rarely.
And you said the reason behind that is it happens very rarely. Anything else, bud?
That prompted a question I have. What's deemed failure? Like a backup's not a failure, right? Tree roots.
No, that would be more of County Health Department determining if it's a failure.
Could you give me an example, because I'm not familiar with what would be a septic failure?
Clogged leach lines.
Okay, so more on the.
Broken tank, more leach lines, because that's where the most of the treatment occurs, so say you've got. The leach lines don't work and everything's coming out of the ground, creating a. Hazard, that that would be a typical failure.
Gotcha, thank you. I'm complete.
You good? Good, Lon?
Yes.
Anybody else got anything? Okay. I guess we're done.
So. I guess the direction would be presented. To a council meeting for approval, pretty much as written.
Yes, sir, I think so. Do you agree with that, Lon? Just go ahead and present it as written?
You asked me, Jack?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
If everything that I could hear, I, you know, it was a little difficult, but I think that. That sounds like in line with what we were talking about before.
Eric, you're good with all of it? You're on utilities. You're good with everything.
Yeah, the only thing that was a little bit fuzzy compared to what was discussed in utility, in my opinion, was the. What happens if a septic fails question.
Okay. Anything else? All good, all in? We're adjourned.
Are you serious?
That's it. Don't take us all.
What they put together, wow.
Thank you, John.